Councilman Felix Gans giving the invocation.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, give us all good graces. We'll come to you, oh Lord, thanking you for your many, many blessings. We thank you, Lord, for this great state. We thank you, Lord, for this great country. Heavenly Father, we ask you to continue to bless us. Bless each and every one of us during this pandemic. Oh, Lord, we need you. We need you right now, Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, we need you to touch, come and touchdown on us, Heavenly Father. When we ask all in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
You had me going, man.
Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? Do I have a second? All right, all in favor? It's a first by George Lawrence, second by...
I'm opposed.
Okay, second by Kenny Glavin. Four, two, one, two. Five to one with Paul Tisdale in opposition. All right, we'll move on to the presentation agenda.
You gotta read them all.
Oh, she's gotta read them all, sorry.
To our policy agenda, we're substituting item 4A ordinance concerning the LGO and short-term rental. To our consent agenda, we're removing 5L resolution authorizing change order number five for the Sanger Theater. We're adding item 5O, resolution rescinding... Rescinding resolution 34720 concerning truck with our aerial lift with truck equipment sales. We're adding 5P resolution authorizing entry with the lease purchase agreement with People's Bank for the aerial lift truck. We're adding 5Q resolution authorizing entry for the Third Amendment for the grant with MDA for Kessler Gates Division Street. We're adding 5R resolution authorizing purchase of citywide data backup system with Pelium Corporation doing businesses metric systems. We're adding 5S resolution authorizing purchase of data backup storage equipment. We're adding 5T resolution concerning network switched software licensing with metric solutions. We're adding 5U resolution authorizing grant agreement with the MDA concerning Sanger Theater exterior repairs. We're adding 5V resolution authorizing change order for the Sanger Theater exterior repairs. And to our routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of forty thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
I move the agenda amended.
Second, all in favor? It was George Lawrence first, Kenny Glavin, and then seven oh. Yes, you voted for it, correct? All right, unanimous. All right, now we'll move to the mayor's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everyone to our December start of the last month of the year. Before I forget, I would like to ask you to spread to the minutes the expenses of the Biloxi travel credit card. But I might ask Mike to follow up on what's been happening with debris, but I do hope everyone had a safe Thanksgiving. I know numbers and some of those things are popping up, but we'll continue to plug through this pandemic and business will return to normal at one point in time. We're just praying that everybody stays safe and that we get through this as fast as we possibly can, but you know, it's sort of, the good Lord's controlling it, so we're asking him to kind of guide us through this. And Mike, are you...
Councilman, I just want to pass along, I appreciate your patience and the patience of your...
It's a...
Folks. That we can't get all the debris all right away. And some of you have had some conversations over the weekend. We've redirected some trucks and so forth, but I copied you this morning, this afternoon, on a picture that shows all the pickups today, and you can see the spread across all the wards. We're getting to the hardest part now. Sometimes the hardest part is outside the neighborhoods and along the major routes where we've got low power lines or a lot of power lines or both. And traffic issues. The police department's gonna help us out by, when we're working on these two-lane roads with only one lane blocked, that we'll have to have an officer and a car to help guide the traffic. And of course, the contractor will have people out with signs saying, you know, "Slow and go" and so forth. But it's gonna be tricky. But we totally appreciate, fortunately, I know you're taking a lot of calls, and I'm not taking that many because I know you're sorting through them a lot. But we're up to a hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of debris. And we're gonna start focusing this week on some of those major roads. For example, on Thursday, we're gonna start a couple of trucks down Pass Road, starting at Debees and working our way all the way to Kessler because there's giant piles along the main roads. And when those two days are over, Thursday and Friday, on Saturday, we'll start working our way down Pops Ferry, across the bridge, and picking up all the piles on Pops Ferry all the way. Again, a traffic control issue, we'll have police, you know, helping us. But we're making a heck of a dent, and I can tell you, we're way ahead of our area of the city on the coast right now in terms of picking up debris. My apologies to the people that haven't gotten their debris picked up, but the best thing that people can do for us is to make sure their debris is segregated and that the construction debris is separate, the fence posts and everything else is separate from the vegetative debris, and that way it'll get picked up sooner. If it's mixed, they'll pass you right by. Anyway, that's about...
Let me give you an update. In talking with the governor yesterday, you know, he said as far as Mississippi, I think over a hundred million dollars of damage is second only to Katrina. So there was a surprising amount of, you know, damage with the storm, as we all know. So it was more to it than, you know, meets the eye, at least initially. So we're, you know, I think pleased with, we're plugging through this. And of course, you know, nobody's satisfied until it's all done. So we're plugging away, and we're appreciative of, you know, of course, the staff and taking care of those emergency things as well as picking up the stuff that remains. And so I thank everyone in the city and employees and contractors that are doing this. And I think, Mike, that concludes our report.
All right, I have a real quick question. You said to separate the...
Construction debris from the vegetative debris. It goes to different parts of the landfill.
Okay, what about like loose leaves? I know that we're not supposed to bag them, so what do we tell...
If you bag them, Pelican Waste should pick them up.
So if they're bagged, so those three things should be separate from each other if you do bag them. But doesn't Pelican Waste have a limit on what they pick up?
Well, they can only pick up what they, you know, what they could take.
I think if the debris is mixed in with the, or the leaves are mixed in with the vegetative, you know, the limbs and so forth, it'll be picked up as best they can. I mean, it won't be swept up, so to speak.
It's cleaner if it's separated very clearly on the road. I can tell you from personal experience, I watched my three bags of leaves get picked up by Pelican Waste, and they drove right by the guy across the street from me because he had a bunch of fence posts stuck in the thing.
I had several people say that today, and I know that we probably put that out on Bmail and our Facebook page. Maybe we could do that again, just, and then we share it in our ward so that we can remind everybody to...
And understand that these guys are picking up these big limbs and tree trunks and everything else with these big claw, you know, machines. They can't pick up every little leaf. I mean, at the end of the day, we all got to get out and sweep our leaves up and bag them or something.
I've got something, just on that same line of thought. When someone asks me, why does the construction debris and the vegetation have to be segregated? What is the appropriate...
Because it goes to different parts of the landfill.
Construction debris, roofing, and that sort of thing goes directly to the landfill. The vegetation is condensed four to one at the sites, Wood School and now gonna be up at Wool Market.
And then the garbage, which has, you know, got food waste and everything else, goes to still a third part of the landfill. So it has to do with the dollars per pound that we pay to put stuff in the landfill as to where it goes and where the, how the landfill is permitted. So they can't take food waste, for example, to the vegetative part of the landfill because it's not permitted for that.
Food waste is gonna be anybody's concern. I think the majority of people that just came outside after the storm and started piling all the crap in their yards, excuse my French. They weren't prepared to segregate, you know, the difference between broken limbs and siding as they cleaned their yard. So now I've got to ask them to go back out into those piles they've put up that have been sitting there in rain and have molded and mildewed and have certain types of bugs or varmints in it that they have to separate it, otherwise it won't be picked up. It's a tough sell.
We've been, we've been, we've been explaining that for a couple of weeks now, but I know we can't get to everybody. Not everybody listens.
Well, they may not listen, and like I said, I don't think anybody was saying it within the first few days of the storm, which is when the majority of people cleaned their yard and their damage up. But we'll deal with the ones that get overlooked when they get overlooked.
Correct.
My question is on the point that a lot of people, houses went underwater, and they put out the whole furniture, mattresses and stuff like that. Who's gonna pick that up? They're not picking that up.
The contractor, if we're going that big, going direct, the same thing as construction waste. That stuff on Crawford Street, yeah, that'll be going directly to landfill. That's, you know, will be picked up and brought there. I think they were on the point today, as a matter of fact, lunchtime I noticed.
But I can also tell you that if a hotel, a hotel, a hotel puts a bunch of old mattresses out, we're not gonna pick those up. They're gonna have to take that away themselves. They're gonna have to hire a contractor to take that away.
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, separate trucks picking that up compared to...
The trucks that picked that furniture that you and I saw, you know, there, same thing as the construction debris.
I mean, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, no, it was.
So I'm just making sure, because like, like Robert said, that stuff sits there now, starts mildewing fungus, turns pretty bad. Especially mattresses and that, you know, they're just absorbed that water and hold it, so it makes it worse. Thank you.
And I, Nathan, going back to you, I know you still have the floor, I guess, but if any of you have issues with a specific address that gets missed or something like that, call them into us. We'll pass them to the contractor. Understand, we've got, as you know, we've got a contractor who's supervising another contractor, so we've got, you know, we can pass along, somebody's got a particular problem, they picked everybody up but me on my neighborhood, we'll pass that along to them.
One more question. Do we have any update today on the chipping site in Wool Market? Is that gonna be approved or...
Yeah, MDEQ has not given us a permit yet, and the main thing they're hanging up on, they want all of the landowners that abut that site to be able to give them a thumbs up in writing. And we've got one doctor that, who I don't know, that's a landowner we haven't been able to get hold of. And at this point, given that they're gonna have to pay somebody for this site, I think our contractor hauling the debris is at the, just about at the point of saying, screw it, I'll just take it all straight to the dump. We'll try that doctor one more time tomorrow and see if we can get MDEQ to budge on that permit.
All right. Anyone else? Questions? All right, we'll move on. We don't have any departmental reports, so we'll move to the council reports. We'll start with Dr. Tisdale.
Thank you. A number of items. No, we, we're looking at the Debees Road situation from Pass Road back to Runnymede out there by Channel Mark, and I know we're trying to work with the county and Gulfport on that. Have we heard anything more on that? Are we able to move forward on that?
Mayor, Mayor signed a letter to Mayor Hughes and to Supervisor Rocco, asking them to go thirds with us to pave that road. We've heard Supervisor Rocco has agreed, but Gulfport has not agreed yet, and we'll keep pressing, keep pressing to see if we can get them to sign up. I just don't think it's fair for us to have to pave the whole road, given that most of it's, or half of it's in the city of Gulfport.
Sure. Well, thanks, I appreciate that. Also, the employee wellness tour, I know on the insurance committee, we're trying to get some things going. I know it's complicated with the COVID situation, but the year's slipping by us again, and we want to get enough data to make, to help us make some decisions on that committee for next year.
Well, Councilman, as you and I have talked, the Blue Cross Blue Shield people are just not willing to put their teams in the field at this point to go around and do all the training. We could institute a program, but with that, the part of that program was to punish, if you will, or reward, shall flip it, reward the people that involved, where involved themselves in a good health program.
Right.
And, you know, we need, we need that program to be set up and they, so that we can track, you know, where we're headed is, is to give a better price for insurance on those people that are in the good health program and smoking cessation and so forth and so on, and charge the, those that are not more. But we have to push them all through the education phase.
Exactly. Okay, so we're waiting on Blue Cross.
Sure you're familiar with education phases.
And I'm also familiar with education faces. Lights on the West Biloxi boardwalk, I see Christie back there. Christie, any idea when they may be flipped on? Should be before the end of the year for you folks at home. Okay, thank you. About a dozen lights on the Pops Ferry Bridge are out, roughly about half of them. I don't know what the situation is there, but I know I've gotten a call or two, and probably some of the other council members have. Do we know what the situation is there, or is there...
The mayor's not here, but I'll see if we can't put our brand-new bucket truck to work.
Outstanding. All right.
It does, assuming the council approves paying for it today.
So that's a bucket job then, okay. Traffic signals on Eisenhower at Route Palafox and Switzer are still out, and I know we've got a lot of Christmas shoppers that are coming over that way. And I don't know how many more traffic signals are still missing. These are missing since the hurricane, but...
You know, it's, one of the things we're seeing is that some of them we fixed, they're working, and then suddenly they go back to blinking again, so they're obviously damaged. I tell you what I'll do, I'll send you a report. I'll send all the council report tomorrow on every light in the city and which ones are up and down. I can do that tomorrow.
If you like, I'm just interested in those two.
Five intersections, I think, as I recall, but they're waiting on, you know, replacement of the part.
Right, it's, we're waiting to get parts and units and so forth. Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple of questions there, Mayor. This weekend, we always have the children's parade, and we have Christmas on the water. Is any of that still in effect, or we're not gonna have any of those?
Christmas on the water, but the children's parade is canceled.
Say again?
Christmas on the water is still going forward, as I understand it. The children's parade is canceled.
Not gonna do that.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to double check, because a lot of people have been, have y'all put that out? Like on the TV or the B News or anything to let people know that?
Yeah, we will, yeah.
Because, you know, a few people, it's been asking me, and I told them I'd find out tonight, when for sure are we gonna do that or not, you know?
Yeah, we'll certainly update that.
A couple of things, going back to the other thing, Mike, I'm surprised they hadn't picked up Howard Avenue. Being a married therapist, you know, it looked like to me they'd had that clean.
Yep. Well, that's an example of what I talked to the contractor about yesterday and again today, that they have purposely bypassed some of the main streets because they're trying to get all the neighborhoods done. Yeah, so Jerry says they are, they are hitting Howard now. I know it'll be Thursday before we do Pass Road and probably Friday or Saturday before we do Pops Ferry. One of the problems with the main roads is there's usually many more power lines on the more main roads, and they're, they have to be very, very careful working under those power lines, so they're kind of leaving a lot of that till the end. The other thing is, quite honestly, we're not supposed to be picking up from commercial properties because the FEMA likely would not pay us. But if the commercial property pushes their material out on the sidewalk, so it's in our right of way, we sort of have to pick it up, so we're, we're kind of giving the commercial properties time to get their stuff out because we can't, we can't go on private property to pick anything up. So, anyway, if Mr. Krill is correct, we have started on Howard this, today. Keep in mind that our entire crew were gone for a month, for a week, and they were gone for Thanksgiving week, so nothing got picked up from, you know, Sunday to Sunday. So we're just kind of getting started again right now.
Two other questions on the Circle Park and the walk on Bayview. Has that been on hold because of the hurricane, or is that still supposed to be taking place?
Christie can answer that question. The work on Bayview is, we've got a notice to proceed.
The notice to proceed on Bayview is January 4th, and no, it's not stopping because of the storm. It's, they're proceeding on.
January 4th, notice to proceed.
And Sherry's not here to talk about Circle Park, but I think it's continuing on too. We, she's working on getting the fence down so we can do the paving of the court, tennis court. And I know she's been working on the playground stuff. I don't know an update on that, but I don't think the storm has affected that.
Are we gonna bring in some dirt to kind of level it off a little bit?
You can resurface it.
I, you'll have, I don't think they're gonna bring in any more dirt. You're talking about on the north part there, north of the tennis courts? Because if we bring dirt in, there's a drain pipe there, you gotta, you gotta build a box. There's a lot of, a little bit more than just bringing dirt in.
The purpose of that, that's supposed to be the field where they could play it, where they wanted to play soccer, football, whatever. If you're not gonna fill it up, it's just full of water, then you waste and have to park.
Yeah, there's a drain box right in the...
I know there's a drain box there, but it's all stays wet.
The main thing is to resurface those pickleboard, pickleball and tennis courts and then, you know, just...
Playground, new playground equipment.
...trees that were there.
Right.
Nobody played football or baseball in there, but, you know, we're working to put it back in the best shape we can.
Yeah, but a lot of, the tennis court and the pickleball thing totally different. I'm talking about where these kids play soccer and football, whatever. So I mean, we gotta utilize that field to make it better.
Nobody ever played soccer on that field.
No, no. We're out there playing.
The swimming pool, I think, that a little...
We're not talking about games, folks. We're talking about kids going out there and using the park and playing on it. And they play soccer, and they play football, and they throw baseball.
But not in that Circle Park.
So I mean, that's what I'm just saying. Not a soccer field, just utilizing what we have as a park.
Well, I think they're gonna put it so that, you know, unorganized or just kick the ball around or basketball or whatever, but again, it's gonna be in better shape than it's been.
Well, the basketball goal, like I do, move it to the other side, and the ball won't go in the street. I don't know, put it on that side anyway. That wasn't too smart. Just put it by the tennis court, the ball falls on the ground, not on the highway. And what about the, the, what do you call them now? Walkways? What do you call them now? You got off the boardwalk, you changed your name. So what happened back there on Bay?
Not a boardwalk, it's a concrete walkway.
You said that too much. People got tired of listening to you say that.
Well, I never said boardwalk.
Walkways.
Yeah, concrete walkway.
Walkway. So what are we doing on that with Bayview?
It's bid, it's done, 2.2 million.
Sorry, bid and awarded.
Yep, notice to proceed is January 4th.
Say that again?
Notice to proceed is January 4th for the Bayview Avenue walkway.
We've been talking about it about six months, and nobody's seen anything changing, so that's why I keep checking with y'all and make sure we're actually gonna do something there. We're supposed to receive the money, didn't we?
Yes.
It was awarded three months ago.
How much was it, Christie? 3.2?
2.2.
Two, yeah, 2.2.
Yeah. All right.
Along those lines, let me give you an update on that Forest Avenue pier. You know, we recovered most of the Lighthouse Pier, and I think we give them the okay to use the remnants of what we've recovered that was stored at our property on Oak Street to replace the boards. There's a significant amount of crossboards, not stringers, on Forest Avenue, as well as the two Oak Street piers. So, you know, we spent a little money in recovering it, but it's staged, and so, you know, if you've purchased any, especially the marine material now, it's way up there. And so I think it was, we have the ability to put not only those two, three piers, but also a little bit of the boardwalk, or the, actually the pier that surrounds the I-110 intersection with 90, with that remnant. So that's going, that's moving forward. We're doing that in-house.
I know it seems like it takes a long time to get a project off the ground, but have to understand that, you know, we have to bid the job out, we have to have permission to do that. We have to award a bid, we have to have your permission to do that.
We have to have a Tylenz permit.
That's right. If there's a Tylenz grant, we have to do a report, or a Gomez, you know, we have to do a report. And then, once a contract is awarded, there is a period of time where the contractor and the government trade contract documents, and then there's a pre-construction meeting to make sure everybody's on the sync. So it just doesn't happen magically, and we're in here on two or three of those steps, asking for council permission, and our process is not one that allows us to be speedy.
I think from time of construction, when folks start building, it's a nine-month, is it, Christie? Nine-month project on that?
Yeah, it's nine-month. It's supposed to be done by October 1st, so it should go pretty quickly.
I'm as frustrated as you are sometimes, but we have a process that is just not built for speed.
Well, if people just ask the question, is that gonna happen in their lifetime, that's all. I'm just checking. I know everything, the process. You know, so we just double check and make sure it's actually gonna happen. Somebody will see it sooner or later. Maybe the great-grandkids, but it'll be okay.
Walking on it at nine months.
Thank you.
Ms. Newman, you're out the room. Do you have a report? Mr. Demming?
Yeah, Christie, I know, this is your exercise up and down the microphone.
Okay, exercise is good.
I know we're out until January, or the end of December, beginning of January for the sidewalk project. Are we still, is that still the timeframe?
Yes, as far as I know, it is. Actually, this week, I meant to touch base with that contractor to find out where, kind of where, how things are going for him. I will do that this week and get you an update because I owe the mayor one as well, so...
Okay, have we made any, any headway on permits for the Patricia and Thornton dredging?
No, we have not. We don't have any more funding for that right now. We're out of that Tylenz funding that we use for that. So they're in the queue. Whenever we get some more money, we'll get started on those.
Mr. Mayor, Mike, do we have any outlook on the projection of additional Tylenz money or dredging money for the port money?
We get County Millage every quarter, so the next dump of County Millage will be the, January, February, November, December. January, February timeframe, we'll get a dump of extra money, and we could put some of that into dredging.
And we do apply, every year we apply for dredging funding through Tylenz every year. It's kind of like a little, a routine thing we do, so sometimes we get it from them, sometimes we don't.
Yeah, speaking of Tylenz, Councilman Barrett, we just got received today the documentation for the additional Tylenz money for the park and also for the cleanup of the park after that storm, and for the Hiller Park boat ramp. All of, all three of those came through today, so we'll have those on the next agenda.
Okay, well, thank you. We've addressed my concerns with the debris pickup already, so that's all I have.
Councilman Glavin?
I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I tell you, it warmed my heart. I was out at Edgewater Mall with the underclassmen, nine-and-under baseball team, and you look at those kids and, you know, we got, they come from all walks of life. We got Asian player, we have an African-American players or two. We have some white players, we even have a Croatian player on the team. But, you know, it was just heartwarming to see those kids out there for six hours ringing the bell and listening to them engage with the adults, and the press came out there and they were asking them, why are they doing this? And it just, it was heartwarming to see kids at such a young age, all walks of life, probably different backgrounds of whether it's political persuasion or other, and to see them enjoy working for a good cause. So we truly have a lot to be thankful for on the coast. Moving forward, and my ward got an issue, met with the HOA president for Reunion Place. They have a HOA meeting tomorrow. We kind of went over their agenda, and one of the items that got forwarded this to the administration was a fence that blew down around one of the lift stations, and they're... And they're concerned, there's some kids from the adjoining neighborhoods, and I guess their neighborhood as well, that are kind of using it as a fort, and they're concerned somebody could get maybe hurt on that thing. Are we responsible for it, or is this a federal thing? Or, you know, I think there's a federal guideline.
Councilman, if it's a fence around one of our lift stations, that's our bust. Reunion Station, what's near it, Street?
Reunion Street.
Okay, got it, okay.
Reunion Place Street or something like that. But he said that would probably, he's gotten a few calls from the neighbors, and he just kind of alerted me that might be a topic of discussion, and be an easy one to knock out if we had an answer. So, I appreciate that. The pickup seemed to accelerate today in North Biloxi, accelerated quite considerably. Some of the cul-de-sacs, they missed some of the debris, and I don't know if it's because of those power lines you alluded to earlier today, or some other blockage.
They tell me in some cases, if they've got, if stuff is stacked right underneath a dangerous tree, you know, low-hanging tree, or power line or so forth, they're gonna have to wait and bring one of their skid loaders. Don't ask me what a skid loader is, so they can push the debris out to where they can get to it. So, we'll have to, just stay with me on this. If you've got one that's an issue and they seem to have got it, not gotten it, let me know, let me know, and I'll put it on their list. Jonathan's back there somewhere. Okay, so, we talk every morning. Again, understand there, we have a contractor who's managing this contractor.
Okay, and then one other kind of loose-end item was a mile-per-hour sign in the neighborhood of Pelican Bayou. It's 25 mile an hour, there's a request to put it at 15.
I issued a service call to have that done. I'm surprised it's not done yet, but I'll check tomorrow.
Okay, and it's great to see that debris ring.
25 to 15.
The debris did not deter the speeding. They've been running around that debris with no very careless, and, you know, whatever we can do to deter that, it'd be great. And with that, that concludes my report today.
Thank you. Councilman Guines?
Yes. Like everyone else, the debris finally got a chance to see some of the trucks in the neighborhood, so that was great. Some people even called to thank me that the trucks are finally here. I see Walter's not here, so Mayor got a meeting set up with you Monday at 10 o'clock regarding some of the construction. Other than that, that concludes my report.
All right, I just have a couple of things. Speaking of the park, it's looking really good. I know we had a big rain this weekend, but they were able to get the grass down and everything prior to that, so we didn't have any washout, I don't think, on that. And Christie and I talked today about that additional Thailand's funds coming in. And so, I'd like to sit down at some point and sort of look at what our options are on what, going forward for this next phase. And then Casey has already told me that if we need additional for next year to finish out the project or whatever, that he'll help us out on that as well.
Okay, and Councilman, as you understands, process-wise, the first thing we do is, at the next meeting, we will accept the grant. I mean, it sounds silly, because we already know it's there, but we have to accept the grant. And then, once we've accepted the grant, we can then recognize the funds. And once the funds are recognized, then we can award a change order to the contract.
Correct.
Process.
Yes, sir. Okay, and then the next thing, just a reminder, December 12th, that'll be a week from this Saturday, Christmas Parade, Wool Market, starting at 2:00 PM. Anyone that wants to be a part of that, the Corvette Club is gonna bring cars again for the councilman and mayor that want to be a part of that. And then, I talked to Chief Miller a while back before the storm hit about a speed limit on Shriner's coming south from that four-way stop. I think it's, it's 45 all the way to that roundabout. And I've had multiple people ask about maybe when you come through the four-way stop, phasing that down to where when people are hitting that going south, they're not wide open. I know going north, it's significantly lower when you come to that roundabout. So, if we could look into, you know, whatever we have to do to maybe phase that down to where, once they come through the four-way stop coming south, it's, you know, goes down maybe 10 miles an hour, and then another 10 before we get to the roundabout to just slow that traffic down a little bit. And that's all I have. With that, we will move on to citizen comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person speaking will have three minutes. When you come to the table, please state your name and write your name and address on the form on the table. Do I have anyone on my left and your right that would like to speak? Anyone on my right and your left? Anyone in the back? All right, with that, we will close citizen comments, and we will move on to our policy agenda. Will you read Ordinance A?
Ordinance to amend the LDO specifically pertaining to short-term rental and timeshare use.
Do you have a motion? Second? Anyone? Mr. Tisdale made the motion. Anyone second? I'll second it, just, it's first reading, move on for discussion. All right, we'll move on to resolutions. Will you read Resolution B?
Resolution granting vacation of a portion of an unimproved public wideaway for the property located 369 feet in length and 20 feet in width.
I'll move that. All right, first by Felix Guns, second by Dixie Newman.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? Mr. Guns, Dixie? Any discussion? All right, any other?
Yeah, just vacate.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Resolution C?
Resolution to grant conditional use approval for a property located at 141 Briarfield Avenue.
So, moved.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, I was looking through the transcript, I also planned, attended the planning commission meeting. And I would just like to amend this, move to amend it so that the driveway is subject to being widened so that it's two cars wide. I've spoken with the applicant, she's agreed to do that. That was a point of contention during the planning commission meeting. That'll get two cars off the street instead of just one for street parking. So, I would, I would move to amend this resolution in that manner.
All right, so you have a motion to amend, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Right now, we have to, you're four, oh, 6-1, I'm sorry. Demming is against. All right. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask Jerry a couple of questions. I know we don't, we don't pay attention as much. Now, you take in a house, it was residential, is this classified as a commercial piece of property now?
If the use is gonna be short-term rental, it doesn't change the zoning to commercial. It's zoned RM30, which is multifamily residential, and the short term is allowed as a conditional use. And so, the condition that we're hearing is that as long as they provide the spaces for three parking spaces, which they have three bedrooms in the house, then it would be approved. It is a single-family house, but on this, in this particular area, Briarfield, you've got apartments, apartment buildings right in there around it.
Now, ask that question. I'm actually, and this is the stuff you miss when all these things. Is it a commercial piece of property? Do they still get the residential rate on the water? And what's the taxes based on this piece of property? Just a house or a commercial piece of property?
The taxes will go up. The taxes on the property are based on the use of a piece of property. So, number one, there wouldn't be any homestead exemption on it. But number two, tax assessor is gonna raise the taxes on it, because it will be assessed as a commercial use. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question in the beginning.
Yeah, that was the thing.
Yes, the taxes will go up.
And the water rates won't be residential, it'd be.
There'll be a tax, there'll be a tax on the water rates because it's being used for.
Now, I said, is our water race, is not a residential, is a higher water race in a short-term rental as a commercial piece of property?
Yes, that's what I was trying to say, is that the water rates, there's a tax that will be applied to the water rates because it's being used for commercial purposes. So, essentially, the water rates will go up on this property.
Yeah, because I know a lot of people do this, so we catching all these people, and they turn these pieces of property into a commercial piece of property. That's what they are, they're businesses. They should be run like a business, they should be taxed like the business, should be charged as a business. So, I mean, these are the things that we not following up on.
Well, no, we are. What we do is, whenever we issue a CO and a business license for a short-term rental, then we send that information to the tax assessor, so that they know to eliminate any homestead exemption on the property. And then, they also know that they need to reassess the value of that property at a commercial rate.
And I think we have a code enforcement, Frederick is the one.
We do, yes, sir.
Who's been assigned to ensure those things are done.
Yes, sir.
We've got a dedicated code enforcement person to make that happen.
Dr. Tisdale, you have?
Thank you, and several of these topics were raised along that line. When we had the representatives from the Department of Revenue here.
Yes, sir.
And I think we all agreed that it was a good idea if they would offer a workshop down here, and they agreed to do that for anybody who is interested in looking at short-term rentals, and for realtors who are marketing short-term rentals, because these kinds of things, losing your homestead exemption, the water rates go up. There may be other utility rates that go up as well, I'm not sure. But as I recall, the state said, yeah, they're learning about these things as they go as well. So, it's, I understand it's relatively new to everybody, and George, you're right, folks need to be informed. They need to know what they're getting into. And then, we need to be sure and follow up that they're doing, these property owners, what they're supposed to do. So, I'm hoping, and it'd be great if somebody put it on the to-do list to get with the Department of Revenue folks, and would need to contact local Realtor associations and any short-term rental owners, and invite them to such a workshop, or maybe if we have a couple of workshops, if the demand is there, just to educate people, as Mr. Lawrence mentioned. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
First and Jerry, do they have to have exit lights?
Do they have to have exit lights?
Nobody lives there.
No, sir, not in a.
Big thing with the hotels.
Not in a single-family house, no.
But these people not familiar, so how do they know where to leave it?
Well, like I explained at the last time that we discussed this at length, is that with a single-family house, you've got a front door and a back door. And so, staying in there, it's logical that they're gonna find those pretty easy. Exit light requirements have to do with when you have multiple short-term rentals, and you have a hallway or a rated corridor that you have to get from one end to the other.
I just thought, that was brought up last week, I thought, I'd bring that up again. I like the exit light, Neil.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I have just a, it's just a curiosity. So, the amendment that Dr. Tisdale proposed on widening the driveway, was that brought up during the planning commission?
Actually, it was a part of the recommendation. This being a conditional use, then the planning commission and/or the city council have the right to add conditions to the property to make it more suitable for the neighborhood. And one of the concerns from the neighbors was, are we gonna have people parking on the street?
So, why didn't they make that change before?
They did, it's actually in there.
It's in there, okay.
Yes, it is.
All right, no problem.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, actually, actually, the applicant is here, Ms. Tim Nikova, and she might be able to answer your questions, if you'd like to speak with her.
My name is Marina Timnikova, I'm the owner of this property.
Well, thank you for coming today and allowing us to ask you questions.
Sure.
This won't be very painful.
Yeah, of course.
I'm just curious about the widening of the driveway. That is something that you're in agreeance to do. This isn't gonna cause any hardship or burden on you with regard to moving forward with your short-term rental?
No, I am absolutely in agreement, and we are getting estimates right now.
Okay, well, that's all I have, why she's here. If anybody else, I'll yield to whoever has a question.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, there's no other discussion. Call for the question on Resolution B as amended. All in favor? Unanimous? Sorry, that's Resolution C. Resolution D?
Resolution to grant conditional use approval to authorize a tattoo establishment for property identified as 2337 Pass Road, Suite C.
Have a second? First by Ms. Newman, second by Mr. Demming. Any discussion? Mr. Demming?
I have none.
All right, all, any other? All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Move to Resolution E.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for certain described property located at 13594 Shaunwitz Road.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First by me, second by Mr. Tisdale. And this is just taking a piece of property that's about an acre and splitting it in half, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Resolution F?
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plat approval for property identified as 2024 Braja Road.
I'll move it. Second. All right, first by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Tisdale. Is there any discussion?
Real similar to the previous resolution, and, you know, it's just a minor, minor resolution.
All right, any other discussion? Call for the, oh, sorry, Mr. Lawrence?
Not voting, but.
Oh, you were voting for it, I'm sorry. I should've known better, you would've just talked. All right, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? So, I'll move it. I don't know who was first.
I'll second it.
All right, first, Mr. Lawrence, second, Mr. Tisdale. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple, like the mic to explain some of this stuff we had it on here. What happened with the People's Bank, you were sending one thing and authorizing another. Different with the fire truck?
Please, on the, what item is this?
What happened? You've got two items in a row, one is O and the other is P. One of them is basically rescinding and earlier. What happened is the truck came in, and the number of days, you know, the date of when the lease was gonna start changed. So, the first one, which is O, rescinds, because the truck was not delivered by the funding date. And P then amends that and approves the paying for the truck, which is $129,000 that we're lease purchasing over three years at a rate of 1.73. People's Bank was hungry on that one. So, that's why there are two of them. One is rescinding the previous one where you all approved us leasing it. And the second one was approving the new lease dates, basically. And oh, by the way, People's Bank not only allowed us to take possession, they paid for the truck yesterday, today. They paid for the truck today. We have use of it as starting today, but we don't have to make the first payment till January 5th. So, very generous on the part of People's Bank for us.
That's a good thing for us, correct. Another one on is R and S, the citywide backup.
It's actually R.
Backing thing, the backup.
RS and, RS and U, I think, all together. Let's see, RS and T, RS and T all together. That's, those three all apply to, this is a budgeted item. It's for a citywide backup system for hardware, software, and switches. Actually, I should be letting the mayor answer this one, because he knows it better than I do. Basically, the reason it's three different resolutions is, one of them is hardware, one of them is software, and the other one is services. Altogether, they add up to a couple hundred thousand, two, 200-something thousand dollars for, that was in the budget for IT for a backup system, replacing our switches and.
Yeah, it's a backup system, it's basically, I don't know how many gigabytes, I mean, is it 600, something like that?
We're actually beginning to have problems where a switch will go out and we won't, and police, police won't be able to, won't be able to talk to the police communications people, because that switch happened to run through Hiller Park. So, when the Hiller Park switch went down, then the police department couldn't talk to their police comm center. So, the switches are very old, and we're replacing them as needed. So, that's, the only reason it's divided into three agenda, three different items is there are three different separate contracts that make up the 200,000.
And it's the first of a planned, you know, our servers are old, and our backup is not really adequate. and our backup is, is not really adequate. And that's, is the first step of a, of probably a two or three-year program where every one of the server banks are backed up data-wise so we can take and restore, and, you know, after a storm or whatever physically. So that's, a chunk of it is the hardware and the software needed to put daily backups, weekly backups, monthly backups.
Well, I'm, I'm pleased to see it. I know we talked about this at budget time, not only this year, but last year as well. We didn't get it in last year's budget, but I know it's long overdue. So, good job, thank you.
Part of the infrastru- uh, you know, IT infrastructure. Thanks, Kiki, for all your comments. Appreciate that.
On, uh, on the Q, is this new money or this just money they hold for the gate?
This is the last $2 million in the gate.
This is the last?
Yes, that's the $2 million to, to finish the Keesler Gate Road. That's the $2 million that we were promised, uh, for the, by the governor quite a while ago. That finally came through this week. So we're accepting that, that additional grant. That gives us the money to finish the, to pay for the underground utilities and finish that Keesler Gate Road, uh, as, as needed. You know, with, with enough contingency if we can handle any changes.
Well, where are we at with the gate?
You need to ask me about U and V.
Q, the gate.
Sorry?
I said, I was asking about the gate. The Keesler Gate, Q.
Contracts awarded. They notice the proceed is December 14th. As they notice the proceed, they'll be out there. The last of the houses is gone.
So, I mean, is there any kind of timeframe when we're actually gonna finish Division Street and open us up? Where, where are at time with that?
Construction period, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Of course, it's about a year, right? Actually, a little bit less than, but we, a year performance. And inside the gate, of course, they're, uh, uh, the military, the Milcon stuff is, is moving forward too. So hopefully we'll have both inside and outside, you know?
All fin- all finished in December 20, 2021. That's the, that's the, that's the date that Keesler is promising for their facilities to be built inside the gate. And that's the time that we're gonna have the gate, the road outside the gate finished. But you asked me about U and V, George.
Say again?
U and V. I know you wanna ask me. That's-
Go ahead and explain to him what we're doing.
That grant came in at the 5:00 this afternoon. This is a, this is why it's an ad. 5:00 this afternoon, we got the $2 million. That's the, the U and V is the, uh, U is accepting the $2 million and V is approving the change order to re, re, uh, point and, and-
Finish the exterior.
Finish the exterior of the, of the theater.
So this is a good thing. We don't have to take the scaffolds down. We just gonna use what they have?
Right, had, had we been delayed, we were gonna have to pay to take the scaffolding, put the scaffolding back up again. 'Cause that scaffolding, as you know, is rented, you know? So the longer they stayed, the more that was gonna cost. So, so this was, um, shall we say, in the nick of time.
Is the $2 million pretty, pretty much to cover everything we're doing right now?
Exterior, yeah.
Yeah. Do we have another phase after that? What's the next phase we're gonna do?
The next phase is, the next phase, and I, I speak only informally here, the next phase is the hiring of a-
No.
A maintenance company. No, you don't want me to?
Like to fix the interior.
Well, the, yeah, okay, so. $2 million gives, gets, gives us enough to do the outside with a million to spare for inside.
Thanks, man. I'll go with you.
Okay. Mayor will be explaining that to me later.
That's enough, Darren. Let's see. That's it.
All right, Mr. Tisdale?
Not a thing.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming? To A, okay. Mr. Glavin?
I, I just wanna comment on F. I, I know this has been discussed in several of our meetings and this is to do with, uh, the clean-out of a, a major drainage ditch. And again, it's my belief that we need some coordination between the county and the city on a, on a, um, I don't know, on, on a plan, even if it's a, a four-year, five-year, whatever, seven-year plan to maintain all of our ditches and all our wards to, to make sure everything is draining properly. But I, I greatly appreciate this being on the agenda today, the hard work of, uh, our director in getting the, um, the, the permit. Not an easy task, as I mentioned earlier, not an easy task at all to get that permit. And, uh, I appreciate unanimous support. And that's it.
Mr. Guns? And I just have a, a real quick question about A. Can you tell us where we're at as far as what our regulations are as a city right now for, um, our state of emergency regarding COVID? As far as what's allowed and what's not?
The state of Mississippi has, has sent forward to FEMA a request for a declaration of emergency and for, uh, emergency assistance. And we're waiting for-
No, I'm asking about what are, what, what restrictions do we have in place now? Just because I know before you couldn't serve alcohol past 11 o'clock or something like that.
Still in place, yeah. And, and, you know, whatever the governor, I don't know what, as, as it is today, if it's changed anything for Harrison County. But we're still in place. And, and as far as, uh, reimbursement, you know, that, the ticket is still running. And, uh, uh, as far as I know, nothing's changed.
Councilman, I don't think we've seen any change, anything the governor's given us yet. So I assume it's all still in place, but go back and review it tomorrow and see what the wearout dates are on those.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Mr. Lawrence?
I, I had one more. On H, is this all the Josette Building? This 902? And we added more money to this for some reason?
No, it, it is a Josette's building. There's no more money being added. It's just they were, uh, they revised their plan to allow for some more commercial space. And the, uh, the design changed from the original thing that was produced. It's the same amount of units. So just felt the, the best thing to do was just to put it forward with the new units and the new commercial space.
But no new money?
But no new money, same amount.
You still have, there's 24,000?
Yes.